All right, good morning, everyone. I called to order our Board of County Commissioners meeting for March 6th.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
President.
Mr. Harris?
President.
Chair Waymire?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
Commissioner Dickinson?
President.
All right, if you stand, we'll have a pledge of allegiance and an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for waking us this morning and for the opportunity to do your business, the business of the people. We ask that you would give us wisdom, guidance, focus, and a heart that is like yours. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Next up is an update from Frontier Extension District. Good morning, Rebecca.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last time I was here, I gave you an overview of our Frontier Extension District. Of course, we cover Franklin, Osage, and Anderson Counties. And today, I have information about K-State 105. I'm not sure if you've heard about it, but you do have a handout with some more information about that. But K-State 105 is an economic growth and advancement initiative for all 105 counties in the state of Kansas. And this initiative has received $5 million in state funding for fiscal year 2024. So this actually started last year, but I feel like we're really kind of ramping up this year. What K-State 105 does is to forge connections and partnerships that create accessible, create access to additional organizations and resources. And all of this is to build additional capacities and strength in each of the 105 counties. So there are several units within Kansas State University that are coming together for K-State 105. And of course, that includes K-State Research Extension. We do have an office in all 105 counties in the state of Kansas. So that's kind of our direct link with Kansas State University. We are K-State, as well as the K-State Technology Development Institute. And then there's other units, like the Office of Engagement. There's a center for the advancement of entrepreneurship, and then there's a net positive studio. So some of the state partners are Network Kansas, the Innovation Center in Northwest Kansas, GoToPica as well, and working with Kansas Small Business Development Center through Fort Hays State University. So to be more specific, this works on job creation, capital and equity investments, business development, technical assistance, and workforce development. And some of the projects that are currently happening are childcare, addressing childcare, affordable housing, healthcare, broadband access, and other elements that affect prosperity in Kansas. So I will tell you that I've been working with some of the communities and the Economic Development Director in Osage County on some 105 projects. Just wanted to share that this is available, and we are your connection to that. So you can actually go on the K-State 105 website and submit a proposal or an ask. But really, again, we are that connection. So you can come and talk to me. I know that some of these initiatives are ones that probably are some challenges or issues here in Franklin County as well. And so I would be glad to work with you on any of these projects or maybe something that arises.
What are you doing in Osage County? What are the projects?
Well, currently, in Melvern, they're looking at replacing some of the sidewalks, looking at some street work in guttering. Also, they have a very nice community center, and it needs some work as far as the facade, the brick. And then next month, I'll go over to Osage City and speak with... They have an industrial committee there, and they're also interested in some of the projects. I'm not quite sure there yet. But there's been a lot of asks from Osage County, so I'm trying to make those connections. I think part of what is also available, there are students that can come out into our communities and do some work as well. And so we're just learning about what is all available, what those connections and those networks look like. But I'm not afraid to ask. This is an exciting opportunity for us because typically how we functioned in extension, we had state specialists who probably had, you know, maybe a tenth teaching appointment as well and maybe some research. But we had state specialists we could go to. Now we feel like that we have access to all the units at Kansas State University. And many of the faculty and staff up there are going to be asked and required to really engage throughout the state. So it's an exciting opportunity.
So like the sidewalks, do you help them apply for grants? What all, I guess, I was just trying to understand the program.
So Colt, we actually held a grant writing workshop last November in Melvern and really working with Colleen Mendoza over there in Osage County. And she has brought all those municipalities together. And so we host, we had about 60, a lot of representatives from the different municipalities in Osage County. Some from, I think we had some from Franklin as well as Coffey. But they all came together, and so we had almost an all-day grant writing workshop. We had the Department of Commerce down, we had other entities there. And so they are there writing some grants. They're working together kind of as a county to submit some federal grants as well.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So who conducts the actual grant training? I mean, this little...
Our Community Vitality Specialist Nancy Daniels does those. And that was kind of a new model because she actually brought in some expertise in the area of grants, again, federal as well as state grants. So they had the opportunity to learn about grant writing, but also to hear from those like that had the expertise in grant writing or who were very familiar with some of the grants that were available. So I was, you know, part of that partnership. We worked together to find a location, and she really sent the invitation, but we had a great response.
Is that something we could do in Franklin County?
I believe so. And they're available online, but of course, the in-person is really better. And we just have to help manage our time because, of course, she covers all of Kansas and they want her in, you know, southwest Kansas as well. So yeah, it was certainly something that we could do. But it was a wonderful model. And I'm really excited to learn about what grant dollars come into the county as a result of that or in the region even.
I know, it's pretty difficult for small community towns like Melvin.
Yes.
I mean, even we don't have, we have some departments that do some grant writing for themselves, but we don't have a countywide, you know, that just has an office and they do all our grant writing.
Yeah. The county commissioners over there were very supportive and provided some funding to do that. And their goal was like, we can grow our own grant writers here, you know, provide capacity. So yeah, it was a very good, very good day.
I know, that's kind of, that's kind of, I never thought of it on that direction. But, you know, a couple of years ago, we thought about something that would help the small towns. And that, I can see more than that would if they had something like that. And then we could help maybe somehow with a grant writer or something to do to make it happen.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for the update.
I will leave this with Derek. It's just, it's some information about K-State 105, give you some metrics that you can look at as well if you're interested. Thank you.
Appreciate your time and touch your base. Next up is an update from Advent Health regarding the utilization of our sales tax dollars. Franklin County, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good to see you all. Thank you for the time and happy to be here. I just want to give a couple of operational updates before we talk a little bit about sales tax dollars. Happy to report that we are completed with the three-phase project that we now call the Health Park and our rehab center. So entailed a shift and relocation and remodel of a whole new rehab location as well as more than doubling the footprint of our physician clinic spaces. And so, so pleased to have that done and completed. About 35% of that was funded through sales tax dollars for county-owned assets. And they're much improved locations. If you've been able to be inside those locations, they'll serve the county and community well, well into the future. Happy to share a couple of items that we've been able to add just since the beginning of the year. You know, behavioral health. We know that behavioral health is a space that continues to expand as a need across all communities, and ours is no exception. And so we've been able to add a new behavioral health provider into that location. He is full-time there as a part of services here, only to be additive to the services that are already being provided by Elizabeth Layton Center and can sometimes feel overwhelming. We also are happy to share that we have opened Express Care on that location. We opened on Monday. It's off and running quickly, but that's a location that provides some extended hours as well as some weekend care for folks who have unscheduled visits that need to be seen that are non-emergent. So the hours for that on Monday through Friday are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at this point. And on the weekend, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. going forward. So again, 18 patients on day one, so happy to be able to extend that and hopefully prevent people from having to feel like they have to drive out of the county for care in that space. Obstetrics remains a space that we feel optimistic that we will be able to reopen services at the hospital. We know that it requires us to have a physician within 20 minutes drive time and response time of the hospital for emergent deliveries to be able to effectively run a program, and that has to be 24 hours, seven days a week. And so we're working closely with paid professional recruiters to do our very best to bring obstetrics providers into this community. Not only do we want to have OB coverage here, but we'd really like those providers to feel like they are a part of the community and faces that you would see here with consistency. And so we've got multiple candidates that we're working, actively working with right now and have a pretty good degree of optimism that they could be good candidates for our market here. So more work to be done in that space, and it always takes some time to recruit. We're hopeful that, we continue to be hopeful that that could be reopened by the latter part of the summer. So those are some of the operational things that are happening at the hospital and want to continue the good work here. I've got Janet Peters, who's Chair of the RMH Board, as well as Sean Perry, our CFO, who are going to talk a little bit more about the sales tax utilization. Before I turn it over to them, I do want to speak both to you as Commissioners, but also to the county and just express our appreciation for the commitment to healthcare and to the community. We know that's a space that's increasingly being strained across rural settings, especially in the state of Kansas where Medicaid is not expanded. And we're so appreciative for that commitment into the hospital sector here. So I'll let Sean and Janet step up here.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you guys today. As Dallas alluded, I am here to talk about sales tax utilization for 2023 as well as our plan moving forward for 2024 sales tax. So you all should have handouts, but we'll go ahead and dive right into it. For 2023, we received just under $2.9 million in sales tax revenue, beating our projected budget by about $243,000, which is fabulous news. And we're very appreciative of that because that allows us to reinvest more into our hospital and in return reinvest into our community. Below is the breakdown of where those funds were allocated. I'll call out two boxes here on the right side. The first is a box detailing out some of our routine capital spend. For 2023, with the help of these sales tax dollars, we were actually able to purchase equipment that span across four different service lines, those being surgery, lab, imaging, as well as our emergency department. And there's some of the detail of exactly what was purchased. And then the bottom right-hand box calls out some of our repairs that we've had, which span across generators, plumbing, elevators, down to our original 1973 chillers that we have on site. So that's the breakdown of 2023 sales tax utilization. As we move forward into 2024, we budgeted for about $2.9 million in sales tax revenue to come in with the help of our Ransom Memorial Hospital Board. There was some great discussion around how these funds should be allocated as well as some community input in this process. A reminder, the three buckets to where sales tax dollars can be utilized is charity, capital, and operations. And the board unanimously approved to bucket these funds in this way for 2024. And this will be the plan that we are working off of. It's hard to believe that we're already in March of 2024. But this is a detailed plan on how we plan to spend 2024 sales tax dollars. And before I open up for questions, I'll hand it over to Janet for any additional remarks.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Commissioners, for inviting us here today. And thank you, I especially want to thank Commissioner Dickinson for her attendance at our meetings. It's really important and it means a lot. I think all of you are well aware of how the Ransom Memorial Board works, but for others who may not be, we're a seven-member board appointed by the county commission. We're all Franklin County residents. All seven of us work in Franklin County, and all of us are very willing to take comments from community members. We all are willing to get input from community members. Our main charge as a board is to approve the allocation of the sales tax. But we do meet monthly, and the administration does a fantastic job of keeping us up to date on the operations of the hospital. So I think we all feel when we come into this process of looking at the options presented to us by the administration for the sales tax dollars, that we do know what's going on in the hospital and we do understand what they are asking us for. So basically, the process is options. We had the three options brought to us in December. All of the members were able to take that away, look it over, review it. Actually, one of our members had a great idea that he brought back to Sean, and we got a fourth option at the January meeting that was a bit of a tweak. And that is when we had our robust discussion, which I think I, Anne, would agree, was a robust discussion about how the tax dollars would be spent and unanimously approved what Sean has put forth to you today. We know there are different opinions about how the tax dollars should be spent, and we're very willing to listen to community members on that. But we also have to make a decision based on what we as a group think is best. So just wanted to bring that forth to you. Appreciate your support and your, that you have given all of us this great responsibility to help bring healthcare and keep healthcare in Franklin County.
What do you figure somebody coming in for obstetrics is going to cost?
Depends on how we recruit that provider, if it's OB-GYN that comes in or if we have family practice medicines. We're working on paying fair market value for those, but there's a lot of different variables to that.
Any board appointments coming up this year to look forward to?
Sorry?
Do you have any board appointments coming up this year? We haven't seen you guys in a while, so I assume probably about time.
I don't know.
I don't.
Yeah, I think, because we had a big group come in, you know, and I think they all got reappointed. So I'm not sure that we do, Colt. I know mine is next year, and I think Ken is on the same.
Any other questions while we have them?
Only question I might have is employment appreciation events. You know, we need to reward our employees anytime we have. It might be a question whether this is property utilization of sales tax. And I didn't know how the board looked at that or the hospital looked at that.
So for the employee appreciation, that's really for employee retention purposes. We utilize those funds for employee development as well as engagement events, town halls and such for the team members. We know that part of the bucketing here is for critical staffing needs as well. And we still have some agency use within the hospital. We went from about 15 back in May to now we're down to six, which is great because, you know, we're able to hire up through the hospital. And part of those funds, again, were to help retain, to make sure that we're not losing staff so that we can keep them engaged in our community and in the hospital.
Roy, I would tell you, I feel the same way about employee appreciation events. As you know, we do them at the county. In fact, we're doing one tomorrow. I think they're critical for employee retention. And I think that absent some of those events, you'd see the numbers and some of these other lines start going up because they're going to have difficulty retaining, attracting and retaining talent. I talk about this all the time, but you have to be in the ballgame when it comes to pay. You have to be relatively competitive. But what employees really want is to feel valued. They want to feel recognized. They want to feel like they matter. And if Advent can use some of this to help cause their employees to feel that way, then that's something that I could support. But I'm glad you brought that up. That's, because you look at that and it maybe could raise some questions, but I certainly understand the rationale behind doing it.
We have seen some improvement on our turnover. Over the last year, it's decreased dramatically and is still continuing, heading in the right direction as we kind of go down on our chart for turnover.
Okay. Anyone else while we have them here? Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Public comic today. Consent agenda today includes meeting minutes for the 28th, study session meeting minutes for the fourth, claim vouchers $343,688.40 and tax change order negative $270.86. Their motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. First item of business is a rezoning application. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, Commissioner. Okay, today we'll be starting with a rezoning. This is a property commonly known as 4740 Eisenhower. It's roughly six miles north of Ottawa. This rezoning is actually combining two acres into a larger parcel of 152 acres. The premise behind this is at one time when Eisenhower Road was created, it kind of veered off and split a property, leaving two acres on one side and then the majority of that 40 on the other side. Since then, a new property owner has bought that and would like to utilize that frontage to be able to enter the main property they own. At this point, the two-acre lot is actually non-conforming, so it doesn't even meet our regulations. It's also too small to build or anything like that as it's too narrow. So the logical thing is to combine this and bring it into conformity with the rest of our regulations and codes. Staff and planning commission both recommend approval unanimously.
Clean it up. The rezoning application in front of us is 2312-2105. Is there a motion to approve?
Okay. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, second item, special use permit. Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, this is an SUP for a mechanical shop. They're going to basically do small diesel equipment or trucks, not to include semi-trucks, but mostly your larger Dodges, diesels, type of thing like that, work trucks, vehicles of that nature. This is located, commonly known as 2459, Old Highway 50. You guys might recognize the building that is there now. It used to be a bar called The Hill. The building now is going to be, the plan is to demolish it and build over that area. The building that currently is there is in pretty bad disrepair, and just the last idea for that is basically to eliminate it. Their plan is to construct a 60 by 140 by 1610 building with a concrete foundation. It's going to meet all of our IBC codes. There are some fire codes that they, as a mechanical repair shop, that they will have to follow. We do have some regulations as far as firewall and whatnot because they cannot, they don't have the opportunity to put sprinklage in it due to the fact that our rural water can't sufficiently provide the water. But there are ways around that, utilizing our codes to add a three-hour fire separation wall between the offices and waiting room to the mechanical shop. And then they'll meet all the other structural components that need fire-resistant building as well. We have set, or we have recommended setting some conditions to this property. Starting with, the operation itself will stay on that property. It will not, they do own three of those lots, but they are going to utilize the middle lot in this area, and they're going to keep the building to that area.
They're not going to straddle the parcel line, is what you're saying?
We are allowed to get pretty close. There is a small setback, but because it is a commercial lot, they are able to get pretty close opposed to if it was up against a residential lot. So they do have a buffer zone to maximize the usage of their property. The hours of operation is going to be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All driveways and off-street parking shall be maintained and all weather surfaces, although they have agreed that they will not be using off-street parking due to the fact it's Old 50 and there's nowhere to park on Old 50. So they'll be utilizing strictly their lot.
Is that seven days a week?
I'm sorry, what?
That's seven days a week?
I believe, no. Saturday is 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and then I don't believe they're operating on Sundays. The minimal, they have to have a minimum of four parking spots, including one ADA handicap park installed that will be drawn. They'll have to utilize a surface that they can actually paint it and then put their signs up. Any sign usage will meet our regulations. And then, as we said, the operation shall be conducted solely within a non-combustible building within the area completely surrounded by fencing and walls or screening. In this case, they have very thick foliage, and they will be able to utilize the trees as natural screening. They are going to clear out some stuff to the backside of the building so that they can put some parts vehicles back there, but it should be outside, out of view from the general public off the roadside. With that said, we have stipulated that up to only six vehicles at a time for parts may be used. They stated that they're going to typically have one to two and that they're not in the business of becoming a scrapyard or salvage yard. But we did give them the leeway if they get busy. That way, they could utilize up to six. And then, as always, the special use will be null and void if the operation ceases for one year. If you have any other conditions you'd like to add, we can do that. I don't, I don't believe...
This is on top of the hill where the old bar is?
I'm sorry, what?
This is on top of the hill where the old bar is?
Absolutely.
Are they going to remove that structure to build a new?
Yes, they will. And then they'll actually have to, there is septic on site, however. It straddles the property line, so they will not be able to utilize what exists. Did some research, and we're not sure how the location was picked, but we'll be doing new septic.
Glad you're able to work with them in lieu of having the water you needed for a sprinkler system, find them a way they can move forward. It's nice having these small lots where business with relatively small barrier to entry can get started in business or build a structure.
Yep.
Even though it's not in the city limits, I did see that you reached out to the city?
We did. We reached out to the city and several other departments. No, we did not have anybody that was against it. The city thought it would be a good use and a good attribute to the area. It's already highly developed as far as a commercial area, as far as with the logging operation. So it's actually not even going to be the most industrial or intense use for the area, but it should mix right in there.
Surprised they haven't annexed it, the area.
You and me both.
Glad to see that old building going away. Any other questions? What's in front of you is special use permit application 2401-2106. Is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion approve.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, it's good to see something going in that area.
Mr. Dickinson?
Sure.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, next up is a rezoning application.
Yes, this is commonly known as 2420 Stafford Terrace. It's north of Ottawa, roughly five miles. The applicant is requesting to rezone a 40-acre parcel into two 20-acre parcels going from the A1 zone to the A2 zone. Both lots meet the minimal size requirements for septic, and one track already has access to water. While there's a letter on file that states that Rural Water 5 can and is capable of providing to the other lot. While there's a letter on file that states that Rule Water Five can and is capable of providing to the other lot. Um, with that said, it's not required, but it is nice to have that on file. There are fifteen smaller lots in the immediate, immediate area and splitting this will fall right in line with the existing property sizes in the vicinity. There are two A-ones and one A-two at this point, but at that point, once it, the split, if approved, uh, there'll be one A-one and then three A-twos in that area. Everything else is around the RE, uh, district. So it's pretty highly, uh, residential for that quarter section as it is. Um, staff and, uh, planning commission both unanimously re, uh, recommend approval on this one.
All bets. Questions for Pat? This is rezoned in application twenty-four oh one dash twenty-one oh seven. Their motion to approve?
I'm making motion to approve.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. And our last item of business is also rezoning application. Go ahead.
Okay, this is, uh, commonly known as ten seventy-five Haskell. Uh, roughly located three and a half miles northeast of Williamsburg as the crow flies. This is a rezoning of approximately thirty-five acres. The applicant would like to break off about, uh, thirty-five off the property and then create eight, about four separate lots of eight acres, uh, roughly. Um, all high, all lots will meet the minimal size requirements for septic and we do have a li, letter, uh, from Rule One Four that states that they can supply four separate meters. Some of the discussion during the planning commission meeting was, the letter was, um, at the time written as if it was just one meter for the entire lot, but we had them redo it and, and provide a little bit clearer letter. So you should have that on fire, file now that states it's four mi, um, four meters. It's, this, uh, parcel is actually located in the, what is considered the building corridor as it kind of follows I-35. Most of our building corridor is considered everything off of, uh, highly usable roads and therefore, um, it's kind of a area that is meant to be, uh, developed. Water. I think we've pretty much covered it. Uh, it's not terribly far from town. It has access to reasonable roads that are well-graded. So we don't see it being highly, uh, detrimental to our road systems in the area. And then everything appears to be able to meet the requirements for septic as well. Uh, we do have a letter from a neighboring, uh, parcel, uh, requesting denial for this as they do not see it. They do not want more, uh, residential lots in the area. Uh, however, because we do utilize this as a area of building, uh, expansion, staff did go ahead and recommend approval. The vote was, I believe it was eight to one. The one was more concerned about the access to water and, uh, that was their reasoning for, uh, recommending denial. However, we did get an updated letter. Therefore, it should meet the specifications required by our regulation.
On the water deal, I know, you know, it's all good, but I know it's, you gotta watch them. I'm not so worried by local realtors, but outside realtors come in, get parcels and they'll say there's a meter available. But they don't tell you it's gonna run, cost you thirty thousand, forty thousand to get it there.
Yep.
It's available, but, you know, that, this doesn't pertain to this, but that is an issue.
It's something that I'm trying to follow up. Anytime we get a letter, I want to make sure that they, because you're right, this has happened in other jurisdictions where the buyers got fleeced and had to find out later, they expected a certain cost and then it turned out to be exponentially more. And so we are, uh, we're doing more research on the water situation per each, uh, application because, specifically because of that.
But we're not, we don't require that a meter be tied to this property.
We don't at this point, um.
A lot of these systems are near capacity. Is there an issue with two meters are available, but they've wrote ten letters? I guess.
So what, in this case, uh, the letter just stated that they had capacity or they had water to add, uh, more meters, but it didn't state it as plural or as three meters. But, uh, going forward, that's something we're gonna have to figure out how we want to, uh, look at these situations. I would hate to force somebody to purchase seven meters and then we go back and deny the, the rezoning or whatnot. And so, I mean, that's a, you know, it, there's gotta be a habit medium.
Find a way to say no to this.
Correct.
Or any, any person, but I do, we know we're near capacity on all our rural water and, and we don't wanna, again, create an instance where a
Absolutely.
a buyer was told one thing and
And if you notice, these letters do say sixty to ninety days, which does put concern on me because somebody else, if they don't sell these lots immediately.
Yeah, sixty, ninety day in terms of land ownership.
I've gotta research the best answer for that. At this point, I don't have.
There's something we can work on, but.
We do know that they have to have water available to get a building permit, so.
That is correct.
So between the point where we, we accept the subdivision and then they are gonna build, then somewhere in the middle there, they have to have water.
Yes, there are multiple stops for access to water, but.
But yeah, just concerned about creating parcels that are clearly for homesites and then it's not enough.
Agreed, and I share the same concerns.
All right, so this is rezoning application twenty-four oh one dash twenty-one oh nine. Go ahead.
There's no access to I-35.
Nothing direct. Going, going down off to California, then you can catch.
How far would they have to go if they?
I would say it's, if it's three miles from Wells, uh, Williamsburg, most likely about three miles would be the, uh, to the west.
Here's another question about, uh, taking agriculture land and put it into residential land potentially.
I believe this is about fifty percent prime ag land and then there are sections of it that, about fifty percent that do not meet the specifications due to the slope and, uh, timber that's on the properties.
That's all I have.
Looks like Old Fifty's about one mile due south. So yeah, this is, uh, rezoning application twenty-four oh one dash twenty-one oh nine. Motion? To approve?
Motion to approve.
Give me a second.
Second.
I'm going.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Remember, we don't keep up with our, um, comprehensive plan of preserving rural agriculture.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Uh, yes. That breaks us the staff reports. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, thanks, Cole. I do not have anything to report today.
Paul, how you doing today? Pat, anything else we didn't cover? Uh, Sheriff is not here. Nobody, uh.
Dustin has one.
Dustin?
Yeah.
Sorry, used to not, uh, used to take a no for an answer.
It blew past me last week, so I thought I'd try and catch you this week. Uh, really, I just want to continue on where Pat was updating you on his software last week and kind of give you an overview of all of our software projects because I have not been in front of you for a while to give you an update on that. Uh, as you're aware from Pat last week, we did go live with the enterprise permitted licensing, uh, software. They're in the transitional services stage as of tomorrow for that. And that is really a post-go-live process that is about a month long before you're turned over to regular support, um, models. So really where we are overall is the road and bridge, uh, PubWorks application is all complete. The ERP pro for the financial management is all complete. There's a couple pieces of that that we're still working on with, uh, specifically payroll. We're trying to clean up a couple areas there and then we have an annual comprehensive financial report piece that we've chose to put off until after audit this year to get that more in line with what Rodney puts together for us as well. EPL just went live and the, uh, Fiddler Technologies, um, product, uh, Abbott for the deeds office is all complete as of last year as well. So we are down to just our tax portion left. That is currently looking like it's gonna be in the August to September timeframe to kind of wrap that up. And then it's really just fine-tuning all of our processes and as a steering committee on this, we're really in a phase now where, um, lack of any better way to put this, we're in the painful portion right now. This is learning all the nuances of the new software, fine-tuning the pieces to get them, uh, working that we want, changing our processes for how we interact with the software, but that's really kind of where we are as an overall. Uh, one, one piece left to get rolled out or live on and, and still churning away, so.
So you guessed about six months left and how long you been working on this big software?
We started this, I believe Derek, Janet and I's first meeting on this was in March of twenty twenty-one. So it's, it's been going a while. Um, I'm ready to get it off the, off the table. I think Janet's ready to have it off the table, but I, I still believe wholeheartedly that this is a very good direction for the county. And what we're seeing even on the early phases has been very good to see the type of reporting and the data that we're getting out of this, changing our workflows and, and getting some of this workflow distributed back out amongst all the staff instead of concentrating in a couple areas. Overall, I, as painful as some pieces are right now, I, I'm still very happy with, with where we are and where we're going. That's all I have unless all of, any of you have any questions for me on.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Get it? Done. Commissioners, done?
Uh, not with the study session we had the other day. Are we moving forward that or are we still studying or where are we at on the ambulance move-ups? Is it, are we still looking or?
Yeah, I was gonna give Christie the opportunity to have some discussions with the city fire department, just to let them know what.
I, I forgot about you saying that. I did attend, uh, yesterday over at Payon. I belong to the Melbourne Water Authority. And, uh, they had a really good presentation over there yesterday by the state, uh, KDHT and Stan's Water Office. And talking about, uh, they'll build their water and sedimentation buildup in the lakes around it. And, uh, um, I know I read an article here a while back in Coffee County where they had a meeting of the minds of people that live down there and are tied to Melbourne Lake and their water, uh, what they use. And they brought in a couple engineers and then, uh, somebody represented each one of the water districts. And just kind of like Paul, you know, it, it, Pat, we talked, Pat talked about it too, how, uh, it affects our economic development. And we, he's had to turn down half a dozen building permits this year because they couldn't get water. You know, and, uh, it might be something good for us to, and it, it affects the economic development for the county. And, uh, they just come in there, wow, I brought the subject up down there, of course, there's a new factory. They're talking about proposing building and it's gonna use almost nine hundred thousand gallons a day. And Burlington only produces three hundred thousand gallons a day. So they're gonna have to give it from, you know, other water districts. So of course Melbourne has a lot to offer and a lot left, but you gotta get it there somehow. There's no way, you know, except through the line. The smaller entity is already there, so it's gonna be a big, big issue. I know, uh, we had a presentation by the Solomon Lake Authority the other day and she told me afterwards, which I knew they were talking about it. Uh, it, we're just one of the six counties with one of the two main, uh, recycling projects in the state of Kansas this year. It's gonna be, it's gonna be like program. Uh, we, we, we have sponsor here and it's going to, and anyhow, she getting all the management and everything together for that. And right now, Ellsworth has opened back up again. They shut their codebook and not people and down Lansing and Ellsworth, they're both open now. So maybe we start getting rid of some of the old stuff out there and, uh, but that's all we got.
Roy? Hang on a moment.
I was at the KAC board meeting last Wednesday in Topeka. A lot of legislative updates. One of the things that the state legislator is like, is wanting to do this year is to be done by, like, the Fourth of April, which is really pushing it because they really haven't done a lot yet this year. Um, they haven't got a lot accomplished. They haven't got a budget passed. But they all want to get out of there because they can't take any campaign financing until they're completely done with their sessions, so. There's a reason for them wanting to get out there, but I'd like to see them get something done before they, um, actually leave Topeka. Um, when, uh, there is a little bit of hiccup that the, um, the House, the head of the finance committee, uh, the tax committee in the House, um, got kicked in the knee by a cow. And so they've actually been out of commission for a while. I think he was gonna try to be back this week, so we'll see what they can get done, but. And then I had, I did go to the, to OU, to the Kids Entrepreneur, um, program. Very, you know, very cool. These kids have, you know, truly, and I heard this several times that day, these kids are our future. Um, and so to see them get, uh, passionate about their ideas was cool. Um, you know, maybe they aren't gonna all come to fruition, but, you know, they're, they actually, they have a dream. And we'll, we'll see how far they can go. And then on Friday, there was a, uh, chamber coffee for, um, Kansas Children's League Service, which is basically a, uh, organization that works with families that have, uh, either first or second child that are under the age of five. Um, just, you know, a lot of people don't have support systems anymore and they try to be their support system. Um, they're trying to keep these families healthy and together, um, and give them whatever they need to be good parents. And that's all I have.
Uh, the Heartland Works, uh, organization that hasn't appoint somebody to them, uh, at least when I was conceived, they, uh, insisted that it was the chair or mayor go to that. So during our reorg, um, I got put on that, but I have an ongoing conflict that is gonna hit those meetings at least till May. And then maybe after that, they've apparently changed the bylaws where that's no longer the requirement, so we can't appoint somebody else. Ian was previously on there, said she's willing to continue doing that. So if we could, uh, I guess make a motion and vote to have her appointed to that, that would clean that up and, um, allow us to get somebody to those meetings. So there'd be a motion to appoint Ian, the, the Heartland Works.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
I've seen.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
All right. That's all we got. Is there a motion to?
Sure. Oh.
Second. Call the favor. Bye. Thank you. Orger.